And the district is just under $5 million. And so, we did want to get this to you so you could be looking at it. There's a range of things on here, from boiler replacements to floor coverings to mobile classroom type work, some freezer monitoring items. So, there's quite an array on there. But, these are items that our staff and school staff and district staff have requested for that. So, that's just under $5 million. Also, the next one is the safety plan and timeline. This is the similar plan that we have given you earlier. We just removed the 1415 school year from it. And at this point, we are still close to $7 million for our safety needs, for our safety plan. And these safety needs are controlled door access, camera. We have some bleacher work in there. And we have several sites that we have some ADA type repairs and installations, and those are included in those as well. The last sheet which I'd like to go over is the capital projects timeline. The items over that you see on the left, the athletic capital and the asphalt paving, and I do want to bring to your attention the asphalt paving. We have a group now, as you know, that's doing this assessment for us. We do not have the numbers back yet. This is just a rough estimate, a plug-in number, so to speak, that $6.5 million for paving. We do not know what that's going to be yet. They have not given us the numbers. But, this is, we could see us spending this much money. But, if you look over on the left, you'll see it's just listed in alphabetical order from athletic capital, asphalt paving, Knox, roofing, safety, and Western Elementary School. And across the top, you'll see July 15, January 16, July 16, January 17, and so on. So, that kind of gives you just a, this is a rough estimate of where could we use the funds? If everything was a perfect world and they said, "Here's your money. Here's the money that you need. When could you use it?" And so, that's where the columns come in, as you see. Down below the total, of course, this total is roughly $75.5 million. Down below it is our ongoing general capital. And these are items that, like the first sheet that you saw, these are the general capital. These are every year. Just because we get $5 million for general capital now, again, in next year, they're going to be $5 million. We're going to have another $5 million or $4 million, et cetera. So, the total on the sheet is 105.5. And we did want to get you this information so that you could see it and kind of see where we're thinking that we could use the money. And I do want to let you know that these items are good. The numbers are in the ballpark estimate of when we do the numbers. I know the numbers that we did for Knox and the numbers we did for Western that were probably seven, eight months ago or so. So, these were the numbers that we used originally. So, a lot of numbers on here, if we wait a year or two or three to do them, the numbers are certainly only going to increase.
Dr. Moody.
I want to be sure that every time that we talk about numbers, there's always a lot of concern. We put numbers out and numbers change every time. Every time we present numbers to you, that you understand that whenever we present it, it's in today's dollars. It's not inflated. It's not with inflation. Because, I mean, you can make predictions that inflation is going to cause those numbers to go up over time, and it's just going to cost you more. But, that is very much a guessing game. So, whatever we try to present to you, when we say we have $15 million of roofing needs, we're saying, "We have $15 million worth of roofing needs in today's dollars." Okay?
That's correct. I do know that in the roofing industry, my understanding is that six months ago, we were doing roofing work cheaper than we were two or three years ago. But, now, my understanding is that number has changed and it is increasing now. It is on the rise at this point. And I think a lot of it is across the state that people have put it off and put it off. And there are a lot of folks right now that are trying to catch up on roofs. And so, right now, my understanding is from people in that industry that there's more work, roofing work out there now for people to do than there has been in the last year or so. So, certainly, it will certainly increase or affect the prices.
Chuck.
That really supports my argument that I've, excuse me, that I've expressed over several meetings about safety issues. $7 million in external safety issues would be a tax on the school systems themselves. I think our problem is over. I see the chairman of the commissioners there reaching for his checkbook. Okay? I'm sorry, he was scratching. I beg your pardon. The cost over time, as Dr. Moody mentioned, is going to be significant. We cannot afford to timeline the $7 million needed for major safety issues such as cameras and keyless entry doors. We need a solution for that. We need a dedicated conversation in the very near future about how we can address that, how we can repurpose other monies that we may have stored up to use for something that's important as safety issues for children. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that?
I do have one question for you, Anthony. You may have mentioned this, and I was flipping through this and missed it. I'm assuming the costs that we've discussed briefly for the bleachers and that sort of thing is included in the athletic capital?
It is not. One thing that we did, you know that our needs for safety was about $7 million when we started this school year. One thing that we did was, we have done a big chunk of that and it dropped off. But, the bleachers went back in it, and I have it on that sheet. And the bleachers were between $700,000 and $800,000 was our assessment from our engineering team. And so, it put it right back where it was. That's right. Well, that's all the high schools and middle schools. That was bleachers that were in need to come up to code. Several issues with bleachers, ADA requirements and safety items. And so, that, even though we knocked out about $700,000 worth of safety items, the bleachers filled it back in. So, that's the reason why we're still at the $7 million.
And for that, oh, go ahead, Dr. Miller. I was just going to say, for that $800,000, if we go with the high number, just to be safe.
Right.
So, if you use $800,000, do we feel comfortable, or even if it's $900 on the sheet you said?
$900.
Okay, let's just say $900. So, we can get everything done, high school and middle school, in terms of the bleachers, we think, for that money today?
That's the exterior bleachers, yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay.
Exterior bleachers.
And it's not any sidewalks around? That's just the bleachers and railing?
No, that's the bleachers and sales. That's the chain link that goes around the perimeter on the high areas to keep someone from falling off. We had some, there are some structural issues actually that we flagged off to keep people off a section of bleachers where the structural members had actually rusted into. And we had some support, concrete support issues that we flagged off where it's just over time, it's just really been neglected, honestly.
Okay.
So, we broke those off, so no one's on it.
Dr. Miller.
The approximate 8% increase we've seen in Knox cost in less than a year, less than eight months, however long since we had the 19.1 something estimate, is that, I mean, is that just inflation, just because the markets have picked up? I mean, in less than a year's time, we're talking about an 8% increase on a project we said was 19.5 or 6%?
I think the market has inflated, and Tom can certainly speak to that as well. But, what we're seeing now is that across the board in the products that we would use in this and the labor and materials, that it has gone up. And it's, my understanding is now, talking with other districts, that it's starting to rise significantly at this point.
One other question for, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry if you want to follow up on that. I know you're getting there, too.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we just had a meeting last week down with Charlotte Mecklenburg. And there, we talked about the increases that they've seen, and it's been in that 8 to 10, even somewhere as much as 20% in some segments of the building industry. And it's both labor and materials. We lost so many general contractors and subcontractors during the recession, but now the work has picked back up. There is a shortage mostly of labor out there today. And that's affecting, as projects begin to come online, it's going to only aggravate it more.
And let me ask one follow-up question for the bleachers. Out of that $900,000, all of that pertains to imperative safety? None of those are just upgrade costs or, hey, we think this should be more seating or it's all safety related?
Yeah, those are safety related, and there's some funding in there for some ADA requirements, whereas it may be a cutout in an area so someone can get in with a wheelchair, which is, you know, the new ADA requirement, not new, but it's ADA requirement. That is in there as well. Other than the cutout for an ADA, the rest is safety, either chain link or risers that keep people from falling through or some structural issue. This does not include any concrete for sidewalks and that type of stuff. Now, there is some money in there for some of our smaller bleachers where we would, that are like this in the dirt where they sink and you move it. That would be removing them, pouring a concrete pad and setting them back on it and bolting them down. But, we consider that a safety aspect.
Okay.
It's not like sidewalks getting to it and that type of stuff.
I would assume, obviously, a lot of that stuff, if it's safety, there's code violations which would put us at risk for legal issues if somebody were injured or, which lord knows how long that's been the case, but I'm just pointing that out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else on that? Dean?
I respond directly to what you just asked and also a question. I see the phases, and obviously, based on the dates, I think I know the answer to how we go from phase two to phase six. Date-wise, but are those, any indication of how, to use Josh's word, imperative these are? Are they prioritized based on need, is what I'm asking? From phase two to phase six that we have on the sheet?
They are prioritized from phase two to three and three to four. And after that, the rest really is, like, the last one is not necessarily a priority list. It's just, it started stretching out so many years in the future, we just grouped it all together and put it in that final year. So, the last is not really a priority listing, no, sir.
So, the last being phase six is not priority?
That's right. It's just the, this is the dollars it's going to take to clean up all the other pieces as we go.
The reason I asked that was because if, in your words, phase six are not necessarily a priority, that's where, phase six is where we find the $900,000 in bleachers.
It's a priority.
I understand priority, but not number one priority.
Let me take that back. It's a priority, it's not in the priority list. That's right.
Okay, but back to it, and not just to be argumentative, but I'm concerned about safety issues, period, as Chuck has indicated. But, if these bleachers, if we're violating codes that could be potential lawsuits, then I would argue pretty strongly that that shouldn't be in phase six in 2019 and '20.
Right.
So, with that said, my whole conversation that I wanted to have tonight, and maybe this is where we're headed, is prioritizing needs, however millions, many millions of dollars that is, us as a board to have a list of priorities. And I'm not in favor of biting little bites of 25 different things unless there's something that we're initially, you know, immediately facing. I'd like to see some of these big list ticket items being knocked off one at a time. But, if that's really my question now that I'm seeing this is, how many of these phases two through six are things that need to be done yesterday? But, based on this, if bleachers fall under that and we've got some code violations, we can't wait till 2019 and 2020 to do that.
I agree. We have some bleacher needs that actually would come before the other items in phase two, which is listed as phase two here. We have bleacher needs that some actually we've had to start on now just because of the severity of it.
And I appreciate the organization of this as much as anybody, but, and I'm not an advocate of having to reorganize, but it seems like we may need to reorganize based on priorities.
Sure, absolutely.
Because we're putting ourself on the line by publicly saying, "We realize there's some needs," but yet, we don't need to work on them until six years from now. We're not saying we don't need to, but we're saying we're not going to. For whatever reason, there's no excuse, whether it's funding, I think we need to prioritize those and say, "These are needs that we need right now." And then, when we do have meetings with the commissioners, we have reasons to ask for what we're asking for because we're currently at fault.
Dr. Moody.
I want to clarify this a little bit with these dates, because I think that's a really good question, Dean, and everybody keeps asking, "What are your priorities?" And it seems to me that from this list on the safety, the way we prioritize these over time, and Anthony, correct me if I'm giving, please correct me if I'm not saying this right. We've been getting about $4 or $5 million in capital each year from the county commissioners. That's about what we get on a regular, ongoing basis. Is that wrong?
This past year, it was, we actually put some capital balance with it, but it was less than $2 million.
Okay, I'm sorry.
From the county, it was less than $2 million.
That's correct, correct. So, we get a small amount of money for that. When we looked at our safety needs, when we did our first, this came from our first safety report. We have never had the privilege of prioritizing our needs based on needs. We had to give you a list based on the limited funding we had. So, if you ask me, for example, is it more important to have controlled door access for Knollwood Elementary or Faith Elementary? Which one do you pick? I mean, we can't have both, and we're only going to let you have it over a five-year period of time. So, we just broke it out. And that's why all those needs in the bottom one are new needs, like the bleachers that we've just done an assessment on, that we didn't realize. It's just pushed down in that year, not because it's not the highest priority or the highest need, it's just because we don't have the funding, so it got pushed down. That's the way we have been, it seems like there's been some history of what we take to the county commissioners as needs, as being, "This is all you're going to get. You've got $34 million in a mediation. Now, you prioritize based on that $34 million." Not, "Tell me what your needs are and let's prioritize what we can do as a, the county and the school district can do along those lines based on what your priorities are." So, what you're asking for, I totally agree with, but it's flipping. That's why we gave you this capital projects timeline and said, "Talk about today's needs." What we were trying to address is, you know, do I think that the county commissioners will give us $105 million next year? Probably not. Do I know that because we are paid, you know, we're trying to catch up to a lot of neglect over a long period of time? And do we have the tax revenue to offset neglect over a long period of time? No, we probably do not. I mean, you're all, we all understand that. We didn't prioritize those on that capital project based on that. I think that's a board decision for you all to decide, "Do you want to do paving? Or do you want to do safety? Are you going to build a new elementary school?" So, the safety list that we gave you over that period of time is not looking at these in dates. So, that, strike out the, I think you should strike out those dates and look at what those needs are.
Dr. Miller.
To continue to carry the banner that I've carried for several years, clarification of an answer you gave, Anthony, and Tara, you may need to be the clarifying factor. That 1.6 or 1.7 was not local ad valorem tax money. It was sales tax money after the bond money was taken from it. Is it, I mean, there has been, no disrespect to the county commissioners, but there's been no assessment of ad valorem tax rate money from Rowan County to pay much of our capital at all, except when there wasn't sufficient of the sales tax money from the state to pay the bond debt service, right, Tara? So, let's at least have the record straight on where the money has come.
Chuck, and then Dean.
Yeah, Dr. Moody mentioned, made a very good point about the options, not having the options. You did, though, in there, choosing these issues, safety issues, as opposed to an elementary school, we do not, to my understanding, have that option. There's a caveat in the money that was allocated to us, that we had certain places we could put that. So, my plea, outside of the board, just on the county commissioners, is if the board considers the fact that they need to have things done now, can we purpose any of that money? And that's, I think that's a discussion we should have, because right now, we don't have that option.
Dean, and then Dr. Miller.
I just wanted to go back to the, maybe to clarify what I was asking, and I agree with, I never, I think it was kind of apples and oranges, to be honest. It wasn't apples and apples to say access panels or doors and bleachers. I think they're two different topics. My point was, when we do find out, I think it's, I'm assuming this is pretty common sense, if we're serious that we're breaking, if we're violating a state code or whatever, that those things become a priority. That's the point I'm trying to make. I realize, and like I said, I appreciate the organization, and I'm not trying to mess up the organization, but I don't care if it's two, seven, or 12 phase, once we find out, whether it was last week that we just determined this, or when we find out last week, even though it's fresh on our minds, it becomes illegal or setting us up for a lawsuit, as that's the term that somebody else used, that we need to begin addressing that immediately. That's my point.
Dr. Miller.
I believe that section, since section five of the mediation agreement does give us the option if, to, that both boards can mutually agree to modify how the funds are used. And that's, we have JPC working on that. So, we do have that option in the existing, if there's mutual agreement by both boards.
And then, that's my point, we needed to get a mutual agreement to do that, right? That wasn't what we had.
Okay.
We have, it's just that option does exist.
Tara, correct me if I'm wrong. We currently have 2.9 in our capital fund balance, correct? Just pull out your checkbook registry and check that for me if you would. While she's looking at that, the reason I brought that up is, we all know the needs, and we can lay them out and we can prioritize them or not prioritize them. There's a lot of needs, and the needs go back years and years. And so, I would argue that there's a lot of things that could have been done differently on everybody's side to probably address these in a more realistic and professional way, perhaps, an effective way. And I also understand now, we could say, "Well, I don't want to spend X number of dollars while there's a need out here at this school or that school." I am a huge proponent of taking a list, looking at what we have, and knocking them off. If there's something we can do feasibly, let's do it. Even if it's small, if it's large, if it's priority one, priority four, if it can be done by the board without anybody else's interaction, let's do it. So, that's why I was asking about the bleachers, because to me, if it's $900,000 for that total cost, that's a lot of money. But, in the grand scheme of things, it's next to nothing compared to what we have on the table ahead of it. We could easily use the fund balance and fix that problem tonight, and at least give you guys the time to start working on it through the summer, get those things laid out as far as design planning, and get those projects bid. To me, it makes sense to do that. And again, it does take a chunk of our fund balance, but it doesn't leave us broke, and it certainly takes one piece of the puzzle, a very small piece, off the table. And we can at least say, "We did that. We addressed it, and I feel good about that." So, I don't know what the thought is. I would, I know normally, we don't make motions and try to vote in a work session, but to me, this stuff's important. I would even entertain a motion tonight to do that. I'd be interested to confirm. I think it's still 2.9, but.
I was trying to double check that you did have appropriate.
Okay.
Just for the record, I wouldn't be opposed to that, and I would be interested in entertaining that even tonight. But, even before we did that, I would like to have a discussion about what would be the priority of what we wanted to spend the fund balance on. And bleachers may be one of those options, but at least have that discussion if there was something, or maybe within that $900,000, you could, and maybe it's not tonight, you could easily identify the things that we are in neglect on right now that may be a code violation, or may be something that should have been fixed or can be fixed, that we could spend a portion and maybe not the entire 900 or the.
There is, there is. I do know that several of our items that are on their list are structural items that we are looking at, trying to address them now because they are that critical. There are some safety rails and that type of stuff that I think is critical that we need to do now. There are some cutouts for wheelchairs and that type of stuff, and it's very important. That's very important. However, I think some of our bleachers in that area may be grandfathered, not saying that's the right thing to do, but some of them may be grandfathered, and we would, as far as cutting out for a certain wheelchair, I think we could make other accommodations for those people, that it may not be, it's all critical, but may not be quite as critical as a structural failure that something's going to fall and hurts some people. So, we do have some items like that. You're right.
Dr. Miller.
I think it's important that this, the capital piece is so important, that we really take a holistic view and not jump in piecemeal. Not that the code violations and things aren't important, but sometime relatively soon, it's kind of what Chuck was saying, we need to look at this whole picture and say, "Okay, there's $20 million, or there's $15 million we think we need to do right now." And we, as a board, agree that, so we can then have the dialogue with the county commission to say, "Okay, we believe that's one new school, and then the rest of the money is for safety, for roofs, for, I mean, however we think the priority is." But, that's, to me, that's the holistic discussion we need to have, instead of taking one piece that may be $500,000 or whatever out, so that we have a concerted effort to say, "This is where the needs have morphed into," as opposed to what I see doing it as piecemeal.
Yeah, and I would, and I think we definitely need to look at the fund balance as a whole. What I will also say is, the problem that we have is there's such a large need. The fact of the matter is, let's say you take $900,000 and we decided that we believe $500,000 is critical. Well, the question then really becomes, "What are you going to do with $400,000 in the grand scheme of $15 million in roofing?" Nothing, zero. I mean, really, nothing. And my point is, we've got a project here that's only $900,000. So, instead of breaking that down yet again and taking more of that chunk and pushing it off down the road, which is where we have, while we're having this discussion, we have that money. Let's show the county that we're willing to do something, chalk it off, and be finished with it, instead of pushing it off yet again. And I certainly will say, I would also continue, I don't want to spend our entire fund balance unless we absolutely have to. So, I'm not saying, "Let's take our fund balance and go to zero." To me, this is the smallest, easiest thing to do that needs to be done, and we can show a little bit of effort on our part, too, whenever we go to the county and continue begging for money. I think it's, to me, it makes sense to do that. Tara?
2.5, the chap available for appropriation.
Okay. So, we still have a few hundred thousand that's appropriated for other things that we haven't used yet? Gotcha, okay.
So, 2.5. Dr. Moody.
In the capital project, if you're looking at the big picture of things, I'm kind of going back to our previous comment. I just, on the capital projects list and the way we try to present it for you, when you're talking about prioritizing and thinking about this, when I said, "Realistically, we really have $105 million in today's time of needs." And you're trying to make some decisions on how to prioritize that. And I do think that that's a board decision. We've tried to tell you what we legitimately think our needs are. And I've said, "I don't think I can sleep at night unless I tell you what I really think they are." And I don't think we've inflated this at all, nor have we put things that are wish lists on this list. We really think that they are. So, now, it's up to the board to make some decisions on priorities, I think, before you go to the county commissioners, to talk about this. And I think this is the way you're going to have to think about this. How much realistically do you think that the county commissioners could fund? I don't know the answer to that. You might have a better answer to that. We certainly know we have $34 million. We have 2.4 in capital that's unappropriated right now, so maybe $36 million before you ask for any additional funding that you've got to work with out of the 105 that needs to be addressed. If you go safety first, and then you look at, then you have to make some decisions about roofing and paving, are those needs that you know that if you don't address them, they're going to cost you more later, right? Because it's a maintenance issue that you have not fixed. So, therefore, the roof starts leaking. Once it starts leaking, you have a bigger problem, and it costs a lot more to fix it once that happens. That's the same thing true with paving. You know, it just costs you more if you have to put three levels of paving down instead of one. At some point, here's the elephant in the room you're going to have to talk about. Are you going to build a new elementary school, and are you going to build a Knox? And if you're going to address those other needs that are safety and high priority, you may be looking at, facing a decision that you are going to close those schools and not put a school there. And that you would reassign students across this entire district, all of the elementary students, to be able to do that. But, I think if you continue to talk about that and you decide not to present that or not to go in that direction, then we need to talk about, there's consequences to. or not to go in that direction, then we need to talk about, there's consequences to each. There's consequences to the schools closing, there's consequences to the safety, and the liability, and the insurance, and that is what you're weighing right now. And they're, they're hard, hard choices, I think.
Dean.
I would just say, I think, well, I think we're having two, we've kind of evolved into two different conversations now, because I agree with what you're saying, I don't, I think most of us here understand that aspect, but I think we're talking about two different conversations as to whether to use, when we say 105 million dollars, obviously, a fund balance of 2 million or 2.4 is not going to cover those needs, and nobody is really comparing those two. What I, what I think we're saying, what the two, the other conversation is, are we willing to use some of our fund balance to take care of immediate needs? I think, when you talk about not being able to sleep at night, I think anybody with good conscience on this board would not be able to sleep if we were just made aware that we're in violation. And I don't know if it was just words somebody was using to get us excited, but if we're in direct violation of any type of local or state law, or mandate, or whatever, and that we are opening ourselves up to a potential lawsuit, if, and that's the word somebody else used, then I think it's our obligation to take care of that when we're aware of it, if we have money available to take care of it. Apart from that, I completely agree with the conversation. You're talking about big picture, but I don't think we sacrifice immediate safety needs, immediate safety and potential litigation causing needs, because of a completely different conversation. So, I'm, I'm with Josh on this, I would agree that if we have some needs that we can take care of now, that we know we need to take care of, whether that's 900,000 and take care of the whole chunk, or something specific in that, I'm in favor of using that now that we're aware that, that we're in fault. And so, that's, that's a different conversation than the big picture, and I think maybe we're going to have that conversation, too. I don't know if that's tonight, but I'm, I'm in favor of using that, knowing that we're responsible.
Chuck.
You know, the fund balance is for emergencies. We adjust all our emergencies, we would have no fund balance whatsoever. It's like having loaf and bread, you can't feed everybody with it, perhaps, but you can feed some people with it. And I agree with Josh, and what's been said about taking out the fund balance, leaving us an amount that we can still live with, and take care of some of the, although I consider them lesser emergencies than using capital for school safety, external threats to the schools, we can't handle that right now. That doesn't mean we can't do some of the things that we've talked about, doing the things that will keep us out of court, perhaps, and some local safety issues that will make sporting events more, more safer, and the fund balance is for that purpose. So, I have no problem taking out 900,000 to take care of the issues that Mr. Van brought up.
Susan.
I'd like to make a motion that we take 500,000 out of our fund balance to apply to any issues that would hold us legally liable, and then see how far that gets us, and come back and discuss this at another time for, for the remaining money if we need to.
Second. There's, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would, I would ask Ms. Cox if she would modify that and go up 900,000. That would probably be more meaningful, and we'd still have a safe, safety in our, in our fund balance.
We would, but we would be below 2 million, and I don't see why we couldn't come back at a later date, after we see how much the, the 500,000 would accomplish. We could come back at a later date and revisit it.
I'd ask Mr. Van to answer that. Would 500,000 take care of some of your major concerns?
I could do whichever the board directs me. It, it, it would certainly, 500 would certainly help. I don't think it would do all of them, but it would certainly help.
Would 900 take care of most of them?
It'll take care of the bleacher needs, so let's not mix, I mean...
Well, the, the issues you were speaking about earlier, yes.
The, the 900 estimate is, is to take care of the bleachers, the inside and outside.
Okay. 500 would not cover that.
Not both.
Okay, thank you.
Susan.
Mr. Sood's head.
Ken.
So, I, just on the, on the motion, I think it'd probably be important to give a more specific directive. My, my guess is that there are a lot of potential code violations out there, and if the issue is the bleachers, then I'd probably put that in the motion. And I will just say, anecdotes are only so useful, but we represented a school system that had a very tragic bleacher case, and it's liability, we got a lot of bleachers that were designed many years ago, and, and just allude very vaguely to this case, very small children can slip through, and bad things can happen, so it's not just liability, it's people getting hurt. I'm not saying it's that likely. I've also represented schools where people have been shot at school in front, but in any event, so it's hard, it's hard to know what's coming next. But just on the motion, I think you do need to be specific about the area where you'd like to be, money to be spent.
Okay, so let me, hold on one second, Dr. Miller, let me turn it back over to Susan, since she made the motion.
Okay, question is, you said that would take care of the outside bleachers, the inside...
The 900 is the inside and outside.
Right. So, the 500 would take care of the outside bleachers?
The, the estimate on the outside bleachers is about 700 and roughly 50,000 dollars, working on the memory.
And this...
That's the outside, and then the other, the difference in that funding was for the inside bleachers, in the gymnasium.
Are we as, are we also legally...
The outside ones are working. The outside ones are much worse, although we do have some interior bleacher issues.
That would, that would make us legally liable on the inside?
I'm not an attorney, but I would say probably.
Well, what you have to say is what counts in a case like that, I have to say. I mean, seriously, the case where, that I'm talking about, you had, everybody knew the bleachers were a problem, there were emails and memos back and forth, and somebody got killed.
It's been documented by someone that's supposed to be an expert in bleachers.
Okay, then I will change it to the 900,000.
Okay, so now there's a motion on the floor that has been amended to Alec. Hold on one second.
Was the attorney saying that not, she, he wasn't necessarily addressing the amount, he was addressing the specific, specificity of the bleachers?
The motion said to correct issues that relate to code that might have legal liability. I think that's too vague for your administration, I think you need to tell them what you need to spend the money on.
But now, if she's doing 900, that covers all needs that have been identified, so that should cover in itself, correct?
If it is clear that we're talking about the bleachers.
Okay, let me...
Okay, so now it's back to you. Dr. Moody?
And I guess I, I want Ken to speak to this again, and I appreciate him intervening in that. Anything could be a legal liability. I mean, we, we've got, look at all the safety issues up there on the board. Any of those could be, and some of those are out of compliance, that are not bleachers, they're sidewalks, there are all kinds of things in our district, so anything could be. The water at Woodley could be. So, that's why I think the, being specific about the bleachers is, would be important to us.
And the other question in terms of priorities, so you've, as, as has been pointed out, you've got bleachers that are now, as presented here, down in Phase Six. I mean, I know that you want action quickly, but you could also ask your administration to come back to you at the next meeting and say, "If we were going to spend X amount of something on the most urgent safety needs, what would it be?" It may be bleachers, and Mr. Van may be able to tell you that right now, but if not, they'd like to think about it, that's another option.
Susan.
I withdraw the motion, and I would like for him to come back and give us the most urgent needs that 900,000 would take care of. I withdraw the motion.
Okay, the motion is withdrawn.
The secondary is not willing to withdraw until he's recognized as the question.
Dr. Miller.
We're in April. We're in April. We have two months left of this budget year, after which, Tara, that fund balance may change once we get our end of the year figures, up or down, correct? Can you reasonably spend 900,000 in the next two months in this budget, to finish out this budget year?
With the planning that's involved, having it spanned prior to the cutoff, I'll say that's our... I will not withdraw my second.
So, how do we proceed from there? I'm not sure on that one.
Well, the, once the motion has been discussed, it is the body's motion, so, in other words, at this point, the motion is before the body, but the body can either decide to defer action on it, or take a vote on it. It doesn't really matter, at this point, what the, whoever made the motion and second.
And I'm, I'm okay to vote on it as it is?
We're voting on 500,000.
That was the motion that was seconded, correct? So, we've had discussion, if there's no other discussion, all, Dean.
The discussion I would have is back to the original, are we saying 500,000 for bleachers? Because that was not the original motion, it was just 500,000.
Well, you've already withdrawn the motion technically, and he has refused to withdraw the second, so I don't know if we can go back and amend a withdrawn motion.
Based on what the attorney just told us, the motion is still what it originally was.
That's correct, you have the pending motion. If anybody would, wanted to amend the, to attempt to amend the motion, they could. If somebody wanted to postpone it to a definite time, or postpone it, your, your rules of procedure also allow you to kill something for six months, which is not appropriate here, but you could certainly postpone it till the next meeting. So, you can do any of those things, you could vote on it, and administration could seek clarification from you as to what to do. You can have, somebody could move for amendment of the motion, somebody could move that the motion postponed until the next meeting, consider, further consideration of the motion.
Chuck.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add another 400,000 to that, is, that's what the attorney said we could do, modify the motion to cover inside and outside bleachers.
Well, no, we can't add another motion to the floor until this one is settled.
Okay, call the questions, Mr. Chairman.
So, that's a, that's a motion he's moving to modify the original motion.
I'll...
So, if anybody were to second that, then you'd have a vote on whether to modify...
Well, let's, let's vote on this one, you call the question.
Okay, so we have an original vote, or an original motion, rather, for 500,000, that was a vague motion, not, not specifically to bleachers. Chuck is making a motion to amend that and add an additional 400,000 to it specifically for bleachers?
Yes.
Okay, that is the amended motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion. So, the motion on the floor would be for a total of 900,000 to be allocated for the If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. And since we have no quorum, that motion dies. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Miller.
I move that we appropriate 500,000 for bleacher, bleacher repair.
So, I hate to slow the process down, but now you, 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 the attempt to amend failed, that's what you just voted on.
So, we're back, we're actually back...
So, now you're back to the 500,000 non, that is specified for administration to deal with high-risk area.
Can I move to modify that the 500,000 is for bleachers?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The motion has been modified for 500,000 for bleachers, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will say again, in my opinion, I think we're splitting hairs when you're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars in a fund balance. No, I'll let it go when I'm done talking. That's how it's going to go. I think we're splitting hairs, and again, we're pushing another issue down the road yet again that we could fix today, because we don't have the backbone to do it. I don't understand why we don't, but we don't. I understand the fund balance, I'm with you, believe me. I don't spend every money that, every dime I bring in, but again, we continually beg people for money and tell them how poor we are, but yet, we don't have the backbone to, to do something. It just boggles my mind. Dr. Miller.
Josh, it's been said, given to us that the likelihood of spending much more than 500,000, that much, before the end of this budget year, is not very likely, so we can easily come back once we have a specific plan and spend the rest of it. This is, this is all that can be, it's, it's not about backbone, it's about taking the data we have in front of us. They can't spend, I mean, what I heard the answer to the question was, we couldn't spend 900,000 in the next two months on bleachers if we wanted to, unless we go start throwing it in the wind. Did I miss, understand what you said, Mr. Van?
It would be difficult to do if we do all our proper planning, which is, that's what we want to do.
Well, we'd want it done the correct way, so giving 500,000 to start this process for the next two months, we may find some modifications, some changes we need. I don't think we're ignoring the 900,000, we're just saying, we can't spend it before the end of this fiscal year, and then we'll come back with whatever else we may have more fund balance to use.
Dean.
As, as a comment, since we're...
You can't call a question in the middle of discussion when someone's speaking. Well, yeah, but then that, keep in mind, it was amended after that, so the question was, you can't call the question, so...
I'll acknowledge Dean, and then after that, if somebody wants to call the question, we can do that.
We are still in discussion about the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The 500,000 for bleachers, my, my comment or discussion about that, and I'm prepared to vote for that, with the understanding, which was not specified, that of that 500,000, it would be for, prioritized within the needs that we have immediate, that we know of, where we're in fault, is that understood across the board?
I would think that's out here, yes.
Okay. Is that a question that Mr. Van answers to? I think it's common sense that you would prioritize it that way, but that wasn't part of the motion.
We need to prioritize the, the, the...
Does that need to be part of the motion, unfortunately? I hope the answer is no.
I think that your administration has an understanding of what, of what, what you need them to focus on, and just, for a quick word on calling of the question, that is in itself not something that happens automatically, a two-thirds majority of the quorum present has to approve that motion, it's basically a motion to end debate.
So, just calling the question.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion that was amended on the floor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion that we add 400,000 more dollars to the bleacher crisis that we have.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to add 400,000 more to the 500 that's already been approved. Is there a second? I'll second it, just for the fun of it. Any discussion?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Haven't we already?
Haven't we already voted on that, and you have to be on the prevailing side to bring him back up?
Well, it wouldn't be the same vote to add 400 more, correct?
That's a judgment call, it is within the discretion of the chair to make. I would, as a rule, you want to avoid multiple motions that are essentially on the same subject. The rule in Robert's Rules is if it is a fundamentally different issue, then it is not the same motion. I mean, I think probably the better call from a purely parliamentary point of view is that that is on the same subject. However, it is within the discretion of the chair and not the lawyer to make that decision.
I would agree with that, and based on what we've already done, I don't believe that's going to happen, so we'll let that die. Okay, continue, sorry about that.
It's best if I, with Mr. Hughes, you're speaking up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I love the Robert's Rules book.
Need him in the mic, she's going to...
You'll need a microphone, or else you will not be able to be recorded. No, you'll probably want to sit, just press the red button.
Live. Anthony asked me a couple of weeks ago to come back and kind of give an update on where we were with Knox, the site and the study that we had done. We had started doing some work on Knox, everything sort of pulled back a little bit, and we started working on the long-range plan as an alternative to that, but we had done some initial investigation, so I called this the preliminary draft, what do you think, site study, of just coming back to you and telling you what we've done, and what's out there, and what we might think about. So, boy, you can barely see that. That one's much better. We have Knox Middle School, we have Overton Elementary School, and so, we really focused on, am I too far away? I must be. All right, there we go. Maybe I should go sit over there. about. So, boy, you can barely see that. That one's much better. We have Knox Middle School, we have Overton Elementary School, and so we really focused on, am I too far away? I must be. All right, there we go. Maybe I should go sit over there. You got it. No, here we go. This will be all right. So we really focused on this area of the field in between as the potential site. And so I took a day and kind of rummaged around the whole site, tried to get familiar with what's out there. And really, it is an interesting little piece of property. The biggest thing of interest is, we actually go from 25 feet from the high point, this is a ridge line that moves all the way through, and then it drops off 25 feet down to, to park. And so, being a pretty sage old guy, I'm actually a lot older than I look, I think, but I've seen a lot of things in my life, and this one said, something's going on out here. And so I went back, talked with Anthony, and I said, you know, it's really kind of suspicious, because you don't see sites that go from zero all the way up to a ridge, and then come down to a nice, long, level spot, and then drop off drastically down to a road. Something was going on there. And so, of course, you know, in that instinct, I said, Anthony, we really need to take a look, because I think somebody took a lot of dirt from one area and put it over here in the other, and made a really nice football field. But when we start thinking about putting a building out there, that might be a different story. And so we contacted ECS, we did a test bore, which is they go out, they do borings, they pull it up, they categorize what they find. And sure enough, we focused on, we did a lot around, because in the end, I said we might as well do enough that when we get out there and it does be the school, we took advantage of the fact that we got, the biggest expense is getting the rig out there. So once we got the rig out there, we might as well drill enough, and we can use them later on in the project. So, but really, kind of for your illustration, the two keys were B4 and B6. B4 being what I believe to be the cut, and B6 what we believe to be the fill. And sure enough, oh, this was the big moment. There we go. These are the test boring results. This is literally the bore as it comes back out. We go to what's called auger refusal when we hit hard rock, which we kind of like to know where the rock is, too. This is, this is B4, which was the one up on the hill, and you can see it's a pretty nice straight line. It's really pretty solid, pretty good. That's what we figured. We got over here to B6, and there's actually a void in here of about six feet. And so our suspicions pretty much came true. What they did was they took the upper stuff, they threw all the junk in there, the organics, there's a lot of loose silt, there's big voids in there where the tree trunks have basically just disintegrated over time. And so that's pretty critical in thinking about how we look at that site. So back to the other diagram, I mean, what we'd really like to do is get the building on undisturbed. We figure it's somewhere around 200 feet. Of course, at this end, it's a lot less and not as big a concern, but if we get out and start to build, basically, I talked to my structural engineer, threw the report to him, said, what do you think? And he said, basically, if we try to build out there, we're going to take it all out and replace it with structural fill, probably some piers or caissons or something, and that would aggravate the cost. So let's be smart. Let's not get into something that we don't, or at the very least, you know, my biggest fear was, I don't want to start a building project and then have to come back to a board and say, oh, we need another three hundred thousand dollars because the soils was bad. I hope that's why you hired us, because we're smart enough to know that and not get into that kind of a situation. So, the next piece was, well, let's take a look. And basically, you know, I took the most compact middle school floor plan that we have, at right around 95,000 square feet, and laid it out on the site to scale. And again, this is the football field. And what happens is, we're about 50 feet off the road, which puts us about 150 feet into the, the bad dirt. And that's really not where we want to be. But, so the obvious ramification is, you know, at 95,000 square feet, 94,000 for a 650 student with an 800 core, which is what we had set up as the proposed size at a DPI standard. The one-story footprint is pretty big, and it actually even begins to encroach a little bit on the existing Knox and gets pretty close up here. And so what if we think about a two-story? And I looked at, again, one of the most compact two-stories that we have, and at 64,000 square foot footprint, it really keeps us, we're a little better than 150 feet off, which means we're just barely getting into what might be some questionable dirt, something that honestly, I don't think is prohibitive. But what it does is propose the idea that a two-story middle school, which is different than the one-story building that everybody is used to, and wanted to bring that up for your, at least discretion or understanding. And honestly, we do a lot of two-story middle schools, because you do get the ability to put six down and seven, eight up, or philosophically, eight down and six and seven up, and you get that ability to separate and do some things that are pretty standard right today in, in either sixth grade academy or eighth grade, and how you break it up. But it really is more common than, you know, not an uncommon thing for a two-story school. But what it does is it keeps us out of what is really a questionable fill. So I took a quick shot, and I said, well, what if we just kind of lay this out, and we'd get the Knox Middle School up on the field, you know, that would free up, we would build this, not have to take Knox down, avoid any additional costs for having to do a mobile village or swing space, so really conserve a lot of that. That's, you know, at least a million, a million and a half dollars for temporaries. We can build the school, and then go back over the summer demolition and, and replace with appropriate athletic fields. I just kind of duplicated the football field, baseball, kept the existing building down here, because it is in good shape, and we're going to need, and there may even, we've had some conversation between Anthony and I about other things that might be salvageable, but we haven't gone farther down that road, but at least wanted to get the concept out here. But we would get, you know, off of Hickory, we have the existing bus loop that now services the elementary school. Buses play well together, so we would pull a new bus loop and service loop off of that. Then we could come off of Kataba, which DOT today is absolutely making us go to intersection to get access cuts, road cuts for street, for, for access. We get enough for a nice 100 and, or 1,500-foot parent or a student drop loop, parent drop-off loop, which is what DOT's school division is now requiring, staff parking, some, even some, you know, throw an idea out, some additional parking that might better access some of the athletic field. So at least at a kind of order of magnitude, it seems to fit, it seems to feel good, it works well with the traffic pattern out there, which is a little circuitous with, with the one-way system that we've got, and may even look at that in the future. But at least we, we seem to be able to access the Kataba and Hickory, and use those intersections effectively, and not get too far out of it. But then you start thinking about the school, and there's a really, really interesting kind of cool thing, and it's the conservation area. You know, I think originally when we looked at this site, we said, oh, great, we can put the school back here. Well, that didn't quite happen. It's not going in the conservation area. But what an opportunity. And, and Dr. Moody and I have had some quick conversations about, you know, there really is, this is, clicked the wrong one. It's a conservation area, but really, I mean, you know, a lot of schools today, we look for what makes them unique. What gives them an opportunity to be special? What is it about curriculum? You know, we've, we've sort of adopted a notion that, that kids today, schools are not just places they learn in, but it's places they learn from. And we build high-performance buildings, and we try and attach them to things, and having that conservation area there is just, is just the most wonderful opportunities to structure a curriculum around environmental concerns. Our kids are so painfully aware of the world they live in today, and they are so tapped into what's there, and they are demanding these kinds of things from us. And to be able to, to link up to this conservation area and the conservation boundary, and begin to think about a curriculum that looks at greenhouses and outdoor learning environments, and aquaponics and hydroponics, and renewable resources, wind turbines, the PVs, I mean, the earlier discussion on, on solar. I, I mean, it is just, we've got to think about that. A little quick sidebar. Photovoltaic panels today are really based on degradation. They degrade a little under 1% a year. So after 25 years, it's not that they're no good anymore, they're just down to about 75% of their original output. They don't go bad, they just do less. On the other hand, if you look at where we were 25 years ago, we didn't even have computers. You know, if we're still looking at silicon-based photovoltaic panels 25 years from now, it's a very different world. Things are moving so fast today. I mean, we're going to be looking at very, very different sources of energy, I hope. I, I hold my fingers crossed. But I think the idea that, you know, we put kids in an environment that are going to change the world, this is a place to start. And they'll look at those PVs, and they'll look at that biomass, and they'll come up with those ideas that 25 years from now are going to change the world. And what a wonderful opportunity to begin to instill that in energy management, conserve, conservation, and tie it to your pathways and horizons and all of that. So that's just a little kind of, the educational architect in me that loves to find the things that make them unique, and in the end, that creates what this school is about, from a design style, from an organizational strategy, and from the ability to write curriculum and base it. This one, or previous?
The one that showed foot.
Uh, there.
Are we using footprints like in that, or is that just the first floor?
That's just the first floor footprint. There'll be two floors. So the second floor will be about 30,000.
30,000.
Yeah, because you got the two stories of the gym, media, those two-story spaces basically are footprint, because they have to go on ground floor, and then the classroom, second floor. Yeah.
Are you ready for questions? Are you still presenting?
Um, no, that was basically it. I got a little summary, but no, go ahead.
What, in economy of scale, what savings do we have by going up instead of out?
You know, I, I think at one level, you get the economy of you don't have, build as much roof because you've got two. The offset to that is you have to build an elevator because you have ADA access, and you have stair towers. But really, I, you know, it's as wash as much as I think there is a little bit of savings to go in two-story because it's more economy, and in this case, because we're not going to have to get into the bad soils, it's absolutely a, a better win for you economically.
And I will say, we, we had a meeting this past week, just to kind of follow up on this, because we haven't really touched on it a lot recently as a board, since we've had the original presentation. We knew during the original presentations, even several months ago, that we were going to be probably under or over what we had in terms of our agreement. I think we had $34 million left, so between this and Western Elementary, we knew we were a little bit ahead. And I think the problem we had then was, we were still ahead of what we had fin, or the funding available, even though we hadn't really added a whole lot to these, these schools. They were basically kind of stripped down models even at that point. So we, we don't, we still don't have absolute final numbers, but just as a point of reference, we need to keep in mind that we haven't changed from where we started. We are still over the budget of what we currently have. So this kind of continues the discussion now of what does it look like going into the budget process, but also where are we in terms of prioritization? Because at some point, we know we're going to have to put these things in some type of order and make a decision, particularly between Knox and then Western Elementary, and what we think is the, the most pressing need. Chuck?
If I recall, the initial model that you came up with had a lot of, lot of critical things taken out of it. You pretty much had a budget to work under, and you put the things in that, you could fit it within that budget, but you had a whole list of flagpoles, for example, and the other things that I thought were really critical for being part of the school. I'd have to go back and visit that, that handout we had, but, am I correct so far?
Yeah, we, well, auditoriums, we, we sort of moved away from. There were some of those items. Anthony and I have talked. I mean, we've been working on, you know, trying to get, I mean, it's gotten sort of suspended because we went off on the long-range plan because other things happened. But, you know, I think a little bit of, of trying to understand where that budget is in the hole was that last round that we did in August. Honestly, incorporated some of those things back in, because Anthony said, we just, we got to do those things.
But we didn't, we didn't hear about that, to my knowledge, did we?
Uh.
Can we find out what was added back in, sir?
Eight months ago.
Well...
Yeah, I could go back and...
I, I think that'd be important. It would be important, maybe see what we have added to that, out of that list.
Well, I think where Josh was just, you know, we haven't gone back and sort of reconstructed this budget now, knowing where we are six months from now. We have seen a great deal of, of movement in the industry, in, in the economy. So I, I guess that was part of the question was, the priority is, where do you want us to look? I mean, what are the things that we go focus on? I can do them both if you want, but right now, I don't have any direction. I mean, I pulled this all out of the archive and kind of put a quick PowerPoint together to let you know what I had done, but I have not gone back in since that original, Chuck.
Well, I'm just asking...
No, I understand. And so we had a conversation about it, but we really haven't taken it any further.
Well, I'm just asking, does know what you, you said you put some of that stuff back in. I'd like to know what was put back in.
Yeah, tell me which one you want, or both, or what you want to do.
I wonder, one of the shows, what, what you, that, that block that was there that wasn't in the original design, what of that block did you put back into the school system?
I'm putting anything back in, right now, I'm sitting here. I mean, I said we've looked at it in terms of what we could put back in.
No, I understood, excuse me, I understood you to say that you had put some stuff back in.
I think in our discussion, he said we would need to put some back in. So we were putting things back in, but then we stopped to go off on a different tangent. I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Well, I understand.
Okay, and let me, let me jump in here for just a second. Let me jump in for just a second. I understand your question, and I'm with you. And, and to be quite honest, I have made some contact, Anthony and I have discussed this. Obviously, the, the administrative team discusses this among a million other things. And because it had fallen by the wayside, I had made some contacts with Anthony. I had actually contacted SFLA, and that's when we started the discussion about the soil. And I said, well, nobody knows about the soil at this point. That had not been relayed to anybody. I said, so we need to get together, and we need to make sure we are all on the same page. So are there still things that we have to hammer out in terms of a final design and costing? Yes. And even if he had a final design today and said the cost, the price tag is X, we would still then at some point have to go back and say, okay, well, we need to trim off 1.2 million, so cut this, this, and this. What I wanted to make sure tonight is that the board was under the understanding, and I hate that, that Gene's not here and Travis couldn't be here, but I wanted to make sure that we were all clear that some things have changed. So it's not what we thought initially, not only money, but the footprint's a little bit different, we've got some soil things. So we're not quite as far along as we thought. Doesn't mean we're a million years away, because we're not there either. So we're not in a position tonight necessarily, because I don't think they have all the information. We're going to have to move forward. I think what we need to start looking at and realizing, at least from my perspective, is we're not going to have with 34 million dollars, we cannot build Knox and the Western Elementary School. We know that. So we can talk details, but, but that's, that's our starting point. Now, could we possibly build one and utilize some additional funds for roofing? That's possible, but I think we need to decide, I think, at least right now, today as it stands, start the discussion and move it forward pretty quickly. What's our number one priority between schools? Do we believe that if we had the, the money today to do one or the other, would we go with Knox? Or do we believe, based on the condition of wood leaf, we must go that direction? I think that is our number one priority. And then once, if we have money left over, we'll deal with that. But we've had these on the agenda with the central office as part of that funding agreement. So I think we need to act on those to continue moving forward with some consistency on projects that are on the table. So, we can continue. I just want to kind of throw that in there, because there's been, like I said, I've been involved, we had a couple of little meetings, and I was a little blown, blown away, too, with some of the changes and kind of where we were, and it was a little disheartening. But we are where we are, so we have to kind of move forward and make the best of it. Other comments or concerns, questions? Any initial thoughts on the schools? I mean, I know we don't have a lot of details, but I think we know more than enough about Knox and the Western Elementary School in terms of what the needs are there. Susan, then Dr. Miller.
I think our question would be, are we going to change all the attendance areas, or are we going to build a West Rowan Middle, or a West Rowan Elementary School?
Dr. Miller?
And I, I think is, I think what I heard you say was an agreement to some comments made earlier. When are we going to set the time to sit down and have the discussion you were just talking about? Because I agree, until we as a board say, okay, yeah, we want to do X building first, whether that's Knox or our new West Elementary, and we want $7 million for roofing and $5 million for safety out of the pot, and we get agreement to change that, but then can we get a further, future commitment for the new Knox? I mean, it seems to me that's the next thing. I mean, we as a board have got to sit down and set those priorities, and when are we going to do that?
Well, and tonight was, I mean, it still is the initial step of that, and we have to move quickly. Unfortunately, again, this is a conversation, we really need everybody here, and I'm not blaming them, that just is the way it worked out, and we all have those instances. I would argue, in my opinion, if at all possible, I would really like to see us try to work, even if we have to have a called meeting before our joint meeting with the county, because I think we really need to hash out some details before we go in there and start talking budget, and start talking agreement. So, rather than trying to... So, um, rather than trying to send emails out and get all that done, I figure we could do it tonight and at least get a consensus. We've got five of us here. So, um, I'm trying to think, we've got, I think it would probably, we'll have to obviously do it before the business meeting as well, because there's only a day or two in between those two meetings. So it's a matter now of what, what our schedules look like, and, I mean, I would imagine we're probably talking, you know, probably three hours. I mean, if we're really looking at both these projects and laying everything out and really hashing it out, three to four-hour meeting just on those two issues, and we wouldn't add anything else to that agenda, because we need to hammer those things out and not get caught up in other stuff.
But Josh, don't you think it's all the capital needs we've laid out tonight that we need to be talking about?
No, I, I do, but I think, I think we have to lay it out in two sections. One, we've got the agreement that's currently in place. We've got $34 million left open. So we've got to look at that as an immediate piece as well, because we have the money there for that. So we need to decide, if, if, if the board said, "You know what? We've changed our mind. We think $34 million is better suited on roofing or whatever," then yes, that would, that would become a part of that meeting. We just need to make a final decision on, is Knox the next thing? Is Western Elementary School, is one or the other, or neither? And so it would be a, a comprehensive discussion, yes. Dean?
Are we, are we gonna have that discussion whenever that meeting is without any updated costs? And I, I think I could argue both ways to where costs may or may not be the reasoning, but will we have any potential cost on this new and/or the updated on what a West would be before we go into these conversations?
Yeah, I would argue that the only way for us to have that conversation is we'd have to ask them to get us as close as we can to a legitimate, realistic figure based on where we need to be in terms of the size of the school. Because otherwise, if we don't, well, for both the schools, yeah. Because if we don't, then the discussion's kind of moved, we're basically right where, back where we are now.
I'm sorry, did I miss? The 21 and the 23 million we got tonight aren't the closest figures we have as of today? Did I just assume that and that's not right?
Understand, though, again, what I'm talking about too is, we need to lay out, because those budgets, they'll actually put them, if they were to give them to us on paper, they'll be broken out, not only the cost of material and labor, but you've got contingency in there, you've got inflation in there, you've got furniture, and you've got all those things. So some of that stuff, we may look at that and say, "Hold on a minute. We're not spending X number on furniture. We don't, we're not spending X on this." So what I meant by that is, some of that stuff's gonna have to be tweaked. And we may say, "In order to do what we need to do, we've got to figure out a way to cut 6%, 7%." So then you have to drill in even further and figure that out. So it's a lot of work and it's a whole lot of pieces. So we want to make sure we get as much detailed information. It's looked at ahead of time and we know, we're confident that it's accurate and we can move forward with that. If we were to ask for money based on that, we need to know that.
And, and just to, just to follow up on that, the reason I was asking, I, I remembered that 8% to 10% and up to 20% conversation we had earlier on these numbers, and I didn't know if, I didn't think this was reflective of that. And to Chuck's point, some of the things that I had heard when I was not on the board, that things had been taken out, I just think it's safe to say that we need an up-to-date, maxed-out, tricked-out school.
I'm not trying to get into that detail.
I understand. I'm just saying for this new estimate or whatever, I'd rather have the Cadillac version and then us make decisions after.
That's what we talked about. Get a, get a full range of, of what, but part of that today was to understand the two-story and not getting into the dirt and understanding how that would play out and letting that be a basis for, um, we'd even talked about potential sites for elementary and how to begin to figure that, because we don't want to just pie in the sky, but we want to be accurate enough to give a reasonable representation of, of what those costs would be.
Dr. Miller?
Um, I'd like to ask a question, Dr. Moody. Is there any educational reason why a two-floor middle school would impede the educational progress as opposed to a one-floor layout?
No. We, we like the two-storages as well.
Chuck?
I'd like you back to comment Dr. Moody made earlier that's very valid. I, I think the days have to be behind us where this is how much money we have, what can we chip away to fit into it? Uh, I, I agree with Dr. Moody that we need to say, "This is what, this is what our needs are, are, are for this school," and present it as that, as well as the other needs, roofing, uh, safety issues, uh, all, everything combined. If, if this eventually will take, you know, I'm, I know we cannot do this based on dollars that are available to the county commissioners or to us. It may be a bond issue we have to discuss down the road, but I think we're making a mistake if we start chipping away to try to fit into the budget and then years from now we look back and say, "Well, I wish we'd done that differently."
Dr. Moody?
I, I just wanted to be sure that you're clear that, um, as we talk about Knox Elementary, um, if we decide not to build Knox, it would be our recommendation to close that school as well. So you're talking about reassignment of all our middle schools if you don't build Knox. You would talk about reassignment of all of our elementary schools if we don't build the Western School. Um, so I, I just want to clarify that, um, in, so that you can think about that and think about that in your process of, of what that would actually mean. Um, I also wanted to say, and Tom hasn't said this yet, I'm a little bit surprised as he's writing his list and he continues to present. At this point, we have gone to them, gone to them, and gone to them to talk about what Western could look like, what Knox could look like. They keep coming back and they keep coming back with lists. We're not paying them. And if you're not gonna build these two schools, they don't make any money. And after a year of running numbers for us consistently, we're, we're gonna have to pay them something for the work that they're doing. And, um, and I'm not saying that, that, um, that should, I don't want that to limit your discussion, I just want you to be sensitive to that issue. So if you're looking at 100, and, and I say that because if you're looking at 105 million dollars of today's dollars, all the things that y'all are talking about that you can, maybe the real true cost of the middle school by the time you add all in this inflation and all that stuff is $5 million more, is that really gonna make a difference in your decision about which of these you're gonna apply? If it is, then I say we pay them to do that work. If it's not gonna make any, you're, you know, you're talking about $20 million difference between these schools, so, um, if it's not gonna make any difference, let's don't ask them to continue to do that work and bring it forward if you don't genuinely have any interest in pursuing it or paying them for their work.
Chuck?
Uh, I, I agree with you, but I don't think it's a matter of not having interest. I think my discussion with the board members were that we need to consolidate West, the Western part of the county, uh, school. We need a new Knox, uh, middle school. Uh, the only thing that's keeping us from doing that are the, are the, are the dollars. And as I just said a few moments ago, this, getting, this is how much we have, that's chip away to fit it, it's, it's just gotta stop. We've got to go to the county commissioners. We've got to make them understand, and then they may well understand, that these are needs that we have and they're, they're tremendous, and probably the only way we can meet those is go into a, a, a bond referendum. And, uh, in meantime, I suggest that we continue on the track that we, we've been on, uh, consolidation in the West and, and the Knox Middle. I, I have no desire not to do any of those. Comments I made earlier though, because the safety needs, that we, we purpose some of the money that we do, have already committed to us, not dumping the project, but getting, getting into safety issues that are critical at this time, and then having a bond issue later that will cover those expenses as well and take care of the safety issues that we have, the roofing that we have, and the consolidation, the new Knox that we have. These are big dollars we're talking about, and this, we're very limited how we can go about getting those. And, and to just say, "We're not gonna do them because we don't have the money," just doesn't set right with me.
I would agree with Dr. Moody as well. I would like to see us, whatever meeting we can put together in the next week or two, be the final meeting that we have in terms of this back-and-forth planning. I think we should be able to put this together and get a, a final enough or a comprehensive enough snapshot to be able to say, "We have the info. Now what we have to do is discuss it and make a decision and then move forward." And that will carry us into the retreat, and then we can go from there. So I, I'm, I'm trying to, obviously as we do this in a meeting, it's a little unorganized, but could we do the 20th? Could you guys look at your calendars and see if the 20th works for the next, for another meeting? For this specific meeting, I mean? That's next Monday, a week from today. I can do that. Dean, Dr. Miller, Susan? Okay, Chuck, what do you? Okay.
And can I make a comment?
Sure.
What time would that be, Josh?
Well, we could, I mean, really, we could do it anytime, and that could be the pleasure of the board I was thinking for, but if, if it's easier to make it earlier that day, we can do that as well. Does it help you either way? You, you're okay to work it around that day? You sure? Okay. So would 4 o'clock on Monday be okay, or we want to back it up? Could, or you guys can't do that?
I'm not available.
Okay. What about, we want to try to stay away from Wednesdays, Wednesdays just for individual stuff. What about that Thursday, the 23rd?
I'm not in town. Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of next week.
Did someone else, Mr. Yousor from your firm represent you?
Yeah, we could do that. We could probably-
That would make the 20th work, Josh.
Yeah, we can't do the 27th. So we could stick with the 20th if you could have Robbie or somebody?
Well, both Robbie and I are out of town.
Okay. Well, the problem is that next-
How far is it from, uh, how far is Asheville?
Two hours.
Two hours.
Yeah.
And the problem is that next week, we've got our meeting on the 27th.
Next week is the meeting, right? Say-
Would us moving the time help you? Is there a specific time that would?
Well, it's a conference. I mean, it's the FBI conference, Council of Educational Facility Planners. It's like the big conference of the year.
Gotcha.
We all go.
And what days are, what days does that conference cover?
Monday, Tuesday, and half a day on Wednesday.
And you're out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, yeah, I mean, that's pretty tough because the 27th, we have our business meeting, 29th is the retreat, so we're just kind of backed up against the wall.
Ms. Chairman, I'm, I'm wondering if it would, if would be necessary for this gentleman to actually attend that meeting? We've got a lot of decisions to make, and we, we make these decisions at that, that meeting, then meet with them, tell them, "This is what, what we made, what we decided to do."
We could certainly do that as long as we had, Anthony could work with, with you folks and make sure we have updated-
We'll work on it.
And that, we could, we could certainly do that. We don't need another presentation. You're correct on that, Chuck.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
I trust him.
So do we want to, let's just plan on doing that if we can? That's about the only day I think we have, and I'll contact Gene and Travis.
Do you back on the 20th?
Yeah, we'll do the 20th and it's 4 o'clock. Is that suitable for everybody? We'd like to back it up a little bit earlier.
I can do any time, right?
Or an hour later, I mean, it's up to the board. We'll stick with four then.
You know, staff would prefer it be earlier in the day if that's possible, but if it's not-
Well, let's do three then. Let's do 3 o'clock. 3 o'clock on the 20th, and we'll plan to meet here, as all of our other meetings are now. Um, and then Anthony, you'll be here, obviously, and then we can, I think we can hash that out enough to kind of move forward from there. Okay? Well-
I, I was just clarifying, I don't, I don't know where the conver, I mean, I might've been out of something, but twice you've brought up the not doing a school at all, so I don't know if I missed something and why that keeps coming up, but my reasoning for asking for a cost was not so we wouldn't do one. I don't, I really am completely oblivious to why that keeps coming up, but was if we were gonna have discussions with the commissioners or whoever else, that we at least knew numbers when we went into a conversation. That was purely all that was about.
Josh, you mind if I-
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Miller.
Um, it, just because the question keeps coming to me, "How are you prioritizing this?" You know you don't have 105 million dollars.
Well, and I would also, and again, we're not advocating anything here, I'm just making, just for clarification, if we were to, let's just say we looked at the option of closing a school, we wouldn't have to do anything with Cleveland. In theory, Cleveland's fine. It currently operates okay. We'd-
It's not really, I, I wouldn't consider Cleveland to be fine. It's in better shape than Woodluff, but, um, we have energy, we have facilities, that and, I mean, that facility needs a lot of upgrades if you're gonna continue to operate it.
Well, okay, well, we can look at that, but it, what I'm saying is there's not-
Not as urgent.
It, it's certainly not an issue where the water table's gonna drop or we're gonna have sewage problems and students have to be displaced. I mean, it's, if we weren't addressing it, it would still be there. So, anyway. All right, so we'll do 3 o'clock on the 20th here, and we'll move forward with that. Anything else on your end, Anthony? Okay. As if there weren't enough. No, hurry, just go before, before something else happens. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Okay, next, um, is a follow-up on Thought Exchange.
Do you want Ken here for that meeting?
Um, what would your thoughts be, Ken? My, my initial thought would be yes. I mean, I think if we have a meeting, I always like to have somebody there to bounce things off of, but-
I could come.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do that. I think it, it certainly helps us more than hurts us. For the Thought Exchange follow-up, Andrew, did you get a response back for the meeting?
It's tomorrow, or Wednesday, 2 o'clock.
Okay. So we obviously have voted on the Thought Exchange for the initial, um, what's the word they use?
Engagement.
There you go, engagement. So what we're trying to figure out now is what we want to use that engagement for, um, kind of what our thoughts are now, where we are is probably capital, some form or fashion. We don't know what that means yet. We have our called meeting on Wednesday at 3:30 at Horizons. What we talked about today, Thought Exchange wants to meet with us very, very quickly. So we can actually meet with them Tuesday, uh, Wednesday at 2 o'clock at Horizons before the called meeting. I'm certainly okay to meet with myself, Dr. Moody, and Andrew, but I'm also, I wanted to open up because I think the boards should be there if they want to be there. So you let me know if, um, if you guys would want to be a part as an entire board. We can also publish it and whoever wants to come. If you can't make it for some reason, that's fine too, but I think it should be open to the board because I think it's important to have everybody involved in that process. Does that time work for everybody?
What's that time?
2 o'clock on Wednesday at Horizons. Since we're gonna be there already, it saves some moving for us, for staff. Chuck?
Yeah, as far as that engagement goes, can we get the biggest bang for our buck by having several options, which, which would you, how will you prioritize these issues in terms of your, what you think's important for the county, for the school system, rather than a, a blank question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and that's what Thought Exchange will handle. What we're just trying to do is, they need to get some initial information from us and they'll look at demographics and all that stuff, but they'll handle that piece because they'll look at demographics and all that stuff, but they'll handle that piece because the thing that we don't want is just an open-ended question or a closed-ended question. Do you want this, yes or no? That's not what we're after. We can do that. So, they will formulate all that and that'll be part of the discussion.
Great.
But we need to get it going as quick as we can so we can get that feedback as we go. So, we'll do 2:00 on Wednesday at Horizons. And if you can be there, great. If you can't, for some reason, that's okay, but we'll-
The question will be, what will the question be?
Yeah, and we'll figure, we will hammer that out on Tuesday, on Wednesday. Next, the groundbreaking. I only put this on here, I just wanted to, as a reminder, the groundbreaking is Saturday.
I'm sorry. I just want to clarify with Patty and Ken. It is Monday night. This is Wednesday at 2:00. Do we have time to publish a different time?
We give 48 hours.
So, we may need less than a quorum there at 2:00 is what I'm saying because we haven't published, it's a 2:00 meeting.
We have to give 48 hours.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, the meeting is currently announced for-
3:00. 3:00. Yeah, you can't- No, 3:30.
Yes, you can't, you can't meet earlier.
Yeah, we have to have enough time to just schedule a separate meeting.
So, if we only have three board members there, it's fine.
It's fine.
Okay.
Chair, vice chair, Dr. Miller, I don't mind if I'm not being-
I'm okay with that. Can you be there, Dean? Can you be there, Dr. Miller? Okay, we'll do that then. That's fine. So, 2:00, we'll do that. Great, so that fixes that problem. Thank you, Dr. Moody. Groundbreaking, again, I just wanted to put that in there as a reminder, 3:00 on Saturday. That is correct. I make sure I didn't mess that up.
Correct.
3:00 on Saturday. So, just mark your calendars and obviously we've had information. I just want to make sure.
Is there a specific program for that?
What do you mean, agenda?
Uh huh.
Yes. Has that been sent out yet? Didn't, finalized, was emailed out, was it not?
What, the agenda?
I haven't-
Well, no, and we can certainly do that only because it's basically a couple speakers, national anthem, the little ceremony. We're hoping to keep it as brief as possible, so, but we could certainly send that out this week to everybody. We can do, yeah, let's do that. That's perfectly fine. Then the second to last thing on the discussion items, the May Board meeting on 5/25 will fall on Memorial Day. So, obviously, we will not be meeting on Memorial Day. We've got other options, but I put down here Tuesday, the 26th, and then Thursday, the 28th. I was trying to leave Wednesday off for church services, whoever had conflicts there. So, if you guys could take a quick look and see.
Josh?
Yes, ma'am.
Tara, I just wanted to ask Tara about that May Board meeting. Is there any reason why? I know when we get into June, we try to get that very last day of June when we move the June Board meeting, but is there anything in, okay?
So, any, I mean, if you're looking at your calendars, does anybody have any conflicts with either the 26th or the 28th, or does one work better than the other?
I have a conflict with the 28th.
Okay. So, 26th, what do we think about that? Is that okay?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as well. Chuck and Susan? Okay. All right, so we'll move that from the 25th at 5:00, we'll move it to the 26th at 5:00 PM here. Okay, Patty?
Yeah.
Easy enough? And then again, I'll get with, I'll contact Gene and Travis just to make sure to relay that to them directly.
Does it work for you, Ken?
Okay. All right. And then lastly, on the discussion items, is the addition for Dr. Miller for the Board Attorney.
When we posted the notification for Board Attorney, there was two pages extra added to it that I had not seen and I didn't believe the Board had seen. And I just think we need to rescind that or until we adopt that because there are four pages here. The first two, we did see as a Board, we did approve, but the two pages that were listed as expectation, we didn't receive, we, I don't believe we had seen. And they greatly expanded the scope of what we did approve said. And so, I was concerned that we, as a Board, needed to look at that because there are about 10 of the functions of those 25 that we currently actually can have done with your firm. And we're trying to clearly separate, you know, the Board Attorney from that so that I think we need to walk through those 25 points if that's going to be part of the job posting and make sure that's what the Board wants in there because, for example, number 10, representation of superintendents and other school officials and advise and consultation concerning their general and specific duties. Well, I have a little concern about that. Should we have some concern with superintendent, we're not paying for her attorney? You know, to go have a conversation with her, I understand about doing your job and this kind of stuff, but, so that's my concern and I just think we ought to either rescind that or have, and tonight may not be the time to have a discussion on this, but those two extra pages were not something that we, we had adopted or had seen.
And I will comment because you had asked me about that specifically. I had been emailed those pages by April. We talked about this too, and I had a paper copy of that as well. And I thought that it was part of that packet because I had seen it had paper copies. I thought she handed it out that night. And so, I just made the assumption that it was, it was in there. And after talking to her, I don't think that was necessarily the case. We were trying to remember. So, that was an oversight on my part because I had it and it just got mixed in with everything else. So, I apologize. That wasn't intentional. So, I just want to throw that out there. Chuck?
Yeah, that is really excessive. If I was an attorney, could do all that, you couldn't afford me.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need to be talking to us.
And let me ask this question to Ken, and I know you haven't seen probably the posting, but even though, I mean, we've already obviously put the posting out and the timeline has started. We just recently, this past Sunday, it was posted in the Post, not that exact posting, but just the job itself. So, do we need to go back through the process and rescind that or can we, through the process of interviews? I mean, I don't think that necessarily binds us to anything, correct?
It doesn't bind, I mean, it's a request for proposals. I suppose one, that you're going to want to, it sounds like you're going to want to establish duties pretty clearly whenever you pick, whoever you pick. That's going to be more critical. If you feel like it's misleading, I mean, honestly, the only concern that I would have from your perspective is, are there people who we think we might be interested in who will be put off by that list? So, you know, in that list, both of those things, April and I had talked, she asked whether there are any descriptions of this kind of thing. And so, basically, that is the advertisement that the Pitt County Board of Education used when they advertised for an in-house lawyer a few months ago or some time ago. So, I think if you are concerned about scaring people away who you might want, then I think you could post a clarification. I think it's on your website. I know that the, I'm on the listserv for the North Carolina School Board Association. They sent it out as well. You could easily ask them to send out a revised, simplified version or a revised version that did not have that two-page list at the end.
And I currently have, just so you guys know, we currently have five firms or individuals that have responded. And I think there's one more at least that is going to be submitting something, but we don't have it yet. So, just, just for reference. And I understand the point as far as folks being turned off. I think it's, at this point, based on the way it's gone, it's up to the Board. I just don't know, I'm not sure, many of Ken's insight as far as, do we need to completely pull that job posting, take that out and repost it and then begin another 10-day process? Or if we wanted to extend it? That would also be at the discretion of the Board. And then if that's the case, do we need to contact each of the firms that have submitted to this point and say, "We've withdrawn that." Do you want to resubmit your package at this point and take them yet again, or can we just keep what we have?
I thought that initial form that we used, the questionnaire that we used was very inclusive. I would suggest that we can, we go with that one. I'm not an attorney, obviously.
And are you referring to the job description that-
The job, the initial one that we had, the two-pager.
Yeah, that had our job description. It was approved by the Board.
Yeah. I think that's pretty inclusive and it probably encompasses what we would want for a school board to represent us outside of the North Carolina School Board Association's attorney, who is probably on a different level than most of the people I would think that would apply for this, that would be interested in it.
Okay, let me pose another question. We currently, it just ran in the Salisbury Post Sunday. That got delayed a little bit, but I wanted to make sure it was in the Post because I was afraid that if it wasn't run in the Post, then there may be someone who, you know, said that was discriminatory toward local folks and different things. We did not want that. So, we could, and again, that posting basically just directs them to the school system to go to that site and look at all that. It doesn't have all that information in there. We could completely redo the process or we could just pull those down and just leave the original posting as it is, and then anyone who goes there from now through Sunday will see the updated information and apply because it obviously doesn't affect those who have already applied.
Yeah, that was my, that was my suggestion.
And I'm okay with either one. I'm just trying to think of the easiest way to get around other than having to ask people to resubmit. So, that's again, at the pleasure of the Board. Dr. Miller, since you brought it up, what are your thoughts?
Could we just have the original posting of what we approved and extend it by five days? I mean, give it, instead of Sunday, give it all next week? I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
And maybe communicate with the five that we received saying, "Just for clarification, this page is, is the specific expectations we're looking for."
Yeah, we could probably do that. Kristy, April, that wouldn't be an issue just to extend that date? Because I don't think we put a date in the posting that went in the Post, right?
On our website, we've got April 25.
Okay, so we could easily change that, let the folks know we've already applied. And I think the Salisbury Post just gives the basic information to contact the system. Okay?
I'm sorry, I put that, two pages we approved.
Can I? I have this. So, we got a date, I can send you off the listserv.
Okay. Well, and I think right now, we actually have the post, the post posting that ran Sunday and it'll run again this coming Sunday. So, it actually bumped out a little bit because we got behind on that. So, we've got a little bit of a buffer anyway because it was supposed to be cut off the 17th, I believe initially. Is that correct?
It was posted on our website Friday. I mean, Friday afternoon, it was posted out there, so that's, if you count that, you have it down there in the web.
So-
So, you want to-
Initially, we were going to do the 17th. I would be okay, we want to push it to the 24th and that gives another full five business days after it being amended. Is the Board okay with that? And that still covers the posting on the Salisbury Post as well. So, so let's do that, April. We'll push it to the 24th and if we'll just make sure it's changed on the website as well. And you know the forms, the two pages he's talking about, if we'll just make sure those are all pulled down. The NCSBA part, our job description that the Board approved, we want that on there.
The sheet.
Just the additional, yeah.
And the signing sheet.
Exactly. That was what was on, actually in the packet last meeting. And then the additions from the NCSBA, we're going to pull those.
All right. I have one follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Since when we hired April, we made very clear distinctions that she was Director of what, Legal and Administrative Services? Is that your title, April?
Yes.
But that was for the superintendent and the school system. And we made a clear distinction that wasn't for the Board. I will continue to still ask the question, the propriety of anything that's for us of asking her to do. Since we made it very clear she was not the Board's attorney, we had a different attorney for the Board at that point in time, we didn't want to put her in a conflict of interest situation. So, while with policies, we kind of crossed the line because that's part of her job, on this job posting and stuff, which is for the Board's function, is that really something we should be asking her to do is my concern.
Yeah, and my thought would be, and again, we obviously had a little bit of an issue and that was logistically with adding those two pages. And I'll, I'll take the blame for that one.
I'm not trying to sense any blame.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, I think on this, I was okay, and I agree with you. I was okay with it because basically the information was coming back to us to review and then all she was doing really is just being kind of the middleman in the posting process. So, because we weren't saying, "Hey, go ahead and write up what you think it should be and you post it and we'll just trust you." And plus, we're taking all the applications. So, administration has not looked at any of the packets at all. They come directly to me and then I've got them. And actually, I haven't even opened them all because I'm just keeping them for us to do as a Board. So, that was my thought on that. I mean, we can certainly change that. I'm just, the other option would be find someone else within the administration to do it, or we could ask an attorney to help us with that and again incur those costs. And again, that's at the-
All I'm trying to do is keep us honest to what we said that job was supposed to be and that we don't, I guess, put April in an untenable situation because she's not hired to be the Board Attorney.
No, I agree.